Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Uh, I think we need to officially do a roll call to let trustee Micho in.
Trustee Broowski. Trustee Chris Meyer?
Here.
Trustee O'Connor?
Present.
Here. Trustee O'Reilly?
Here.
Trustee Tanucci?
Here.
Uh, so then, a motion to let trustee Micho in? Moved by trustee Broowski?
Second.
Uh, second by trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Broowski?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Motion carry. Jenny, you're fortunate they let you in.
Oh darn. Thrilled to be here.
Absolutely. The Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Few more people walked in for Valentine's Day. Uh, we have the, uh, second item on the agenda is the homeowners association visitors. I don't think there's anyone from Martin Lakes or Ron Kingly. Uh, Carol Levin from Victorian, Victorian Oak Estates. For that, again. Anybody? All right, uh, now it's time for public comment. We did post a written document from President Mr. Goldberg. It's on the website. Any other public comment in the room? Right, we'll keep ourselves moving. I don't think there's, uh, any public safety here tonight. I do know that, uh, some of you participated in CPR training. Right?
Oh, back to the, we did get an email about the demolition. Doesn't count as public comment?
Uh, no, no, that was not, it was just, well, it was, um, just a thank you for getting the nursery building taken down, right? So, yeah. Uh, okay, so then, moving along to the consent agenda. Uh, there's a few things on it, um, a few. There's the bills list pay warrant. There's the executive session meeting minutes from January 31st. Uh, there's the board meeting minutes from the last meeting on January 31st. There's the annual woodlawn PTO raffle and waiver of $25 fee. Um, the HDL GBA has special event applications. One of them we're gonna ratify because technically I approved it. It's the cocoa crawl that happened last weekend. And then there's the craft beer fest, April 29th, the chocolate fest on, uh, May 19th, strawberry fest on June 23rd, vintage days on, uh, July 29th, Irish days, uh, in September on 9/2, apple fest 9/22, October days, 10/1. It's actually through the whole month. Then carriage rides, uh, through the holidays around Thanksgiving and Christmas. If there's any, uh, questions or comments?
I had to change the board's minutes.
Oh, you do, okay.
Um, I quoted the wrong amount for the grant for the Christmas light or the holiday light. I said 2,500, it's 2,730. So I made that change and.
Good catching, thank you.
Uh, it was trustee Tanucci, actually. I had.
Thank you, Kent.
You're welcome.
Um, any other, um, comments or do you, does somebody wanna make a motion?
I actually do.
Okay.
For items nine through 17, did we receive the liquor license?
Not yet.
Okay.
So. Approval would be contingent on the liquor license being received.
Right. And then also, the insurance certificate has a 715 expiration on most of the insurance and liquor liability expired before 30. So I would also like to make approvals beyond those dates contingent upon.
I sent you a copy of the new cer- certificate of insurance.
With, so they already renewed something that doesn't?
They, what they said is that the dates of the 715.
Yeah.
That's the expiration date on 715, they get a new COI. Doing it for 2024, 715, 2024. Um, and the same with the liquor.
Okay, so I did see that they fixed the dates on the carriage rides.
Yeah, that was a separate one.
That's what I, I thought that was the only thing they fixed. It would be highly unusual for any insurance company to renew an insurance policy five months in advance of expiration. Let me take a look at that.
Sent you the email that came from HDL GBA with their notes from the insurance company.
All right, it's very odd that they would renew it this far in advance. Hopefully they didn't just change the dates on the certificate. Hopefully there's no funny business here.
Verification?
Yeah. Making sure they're always current. I'm just glad it's all this early. Please thank them.
I did have a question for your insurance types in the room. Is that enough coverage?
Oh, let's see.
Just like four million dollars of me in light of what I'm in park. I ask myself, is that enough coverage?
I wondered about that.
So it's, it's one million plus four million umbrella, so five total.
The liability.
Well, for the village, we have, in issuing permits and the like, we have general authority for that type of activity. Cause some of these things are occurring on village property. If we have, uh, any kind of defect in our property, we may be exposed to that liability. But I would suggest that we may be exposed to that liability, special events or not. Um, and we do have insurance to cover those types of things. So they, uh, other than bringing more people into the downtown, I don't think that the, uh, the liability risk of the special events has a great deal of, uh, impact on the village. But the fact that we are bringing more people in, to the extent we're not maintaining our, our facilities, I suppose there's a risk to that.
Yeah, now that I'm looking at this, um, it is the workers comp that was updated until the end of this year. But the others still show expiration of July of 2023 and the liquor liability, 23. So, yeah, those have not been updated.
So you wanna make a motion contingent?
Right.
On, um.
Exactly.
Licenses and the updated insurance.
So if something bad happened, is four million dollars enough to protect the business owners group or is there nothing there to go after? I mean, what happens at the end of that, like?
If you blow through your limit, the rest is out of your pocket. And you being the insured. Whoever's. Out of their pocket.
Sorry?
Whose pocket are we talking?
That's what he's asking, that's what he's asking.
So this, this policy is the HDL GBA. They're protected up to five million of liability. If they're responsible for more than five million, it comes out of their funds.
Or not us.
But that.
They're responsible.
At ours, we're not at risk here, is that ours to really sign on?
So we are an additional insured, so in theory, we're covered under their policy.
I, I think that the biggest risk to the village is that somebody files a lawsuit and we get tagged as a me too party. Um, but the insurance company does cover defense. Usually what happens with insurance policies, if it's not settled, the expenses are the first thing that are, uh, you know, the, the defense expenses are the first things that are drawn from the coverage limit. Not until there's a judgment that you have a problem. Now, if there's an appeal, that's a different issue. But it should at least cover the village for the defense that we're in need of.
I, I don't think we're talking, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the village. I'm concerned about them. And, and, and perhaps they need to, um, reconsider at some point, uh, how, how big a policy they have.
I agree with.
So there's no easy answer as to how much insurance is enough and how much is too much. That's for every insured to decide on their own. How much risk are they willing to take and how much are they willing to pay to avoid that risk?
That's what, I don't know that we've got a horse in that race. We, we might care and, you know, as genuine people, the.
So I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Pursuant to the contingency of the insurance and liquor license and changes of.
Okay, moved by trustee Broowski?
Second.
Uh, second by trustee Tanucci. Roll call.
Trustee Broowski?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
All right, motion carry. Um, the next item on the agenda is the village planners report. Don't have a village planner here tonight, but we did.
We do. Taylor's here.
Oh, Taylor, you're there. When did you join? Go ahead, Taylor.
Hey, good evening. Thank you, President Jacob. Yeah, I've been on the call, uh, since we started here, but, uh, my planner report is included in the agenda packet that was sent to everyone and posted, um, accordingly. I have nothing really to add. The only note that is even on that planner's report is the note about, uh, staff working with Olson, um, the Olson family regarding their storage facility on Route 53. Uh, they're not quite ready to appear to the, uh, before the architectural commission, so that's kinda still pending, um, a date, but, uh, that could be in the very near future. And that's all.
Yeah, so they wanna, um, go to the AC to, uh, present some revised exterior plans for their self-storage facility that's across from the Menards, um, on the west side of the road, 53 and Lake Oak Road, so. Well, thank you. All right, so next up is the village engineers report.
All right, so, uh, like the planners' report, the engineers' report is in the board packet.
Oh, you're done then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions, there we go.
No, go ahead.
So, uh, just a couple, uh, highlights here. Uh, number one, the bridge and the advanced, uh, deterrent options. Uh, we're still gathering all of that data from the, uh, discussion at the last board meeting. Uh, I'll, I'll talk about the road maintenance program here in a minute. The, uh, trucker road traffic calming data, um, that's being finalized for the presentation at, uh, February 28th board meeting. Uh, village home expansion, uh, we have a manager Jackson who's gonna lead through a discussion on that, so I will use my time on that one. Jumping down, advocate the road, the sanitary sewer lining project. Uh, there's some communication that went out earlier today that, uh, contractor is going to be doing the work in Long Grove next week. And there's going to be a boiler and compressor, and they describe it as white noise that needs to run 24 hours a day to, uh, cure that liner. So they'll have that, um, apparatus set up on the eastern end of the project, which is the Buffalo Grove end, uh, later this week. So if anybody is, um, out and about during the, uh, the night hours, it'll be on, um, wanna hear it or anything like that. But it is, it is low, uh, volume, so. That is their plan. They plan to have that done by the end of the week. Uh, if it does, if weather wreaks havoc on them, they will not be working over the weekend. Many members will do that, uh, following Monday.
And the noise will turn off over the weekend?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Uh, isn't that, uh, one of, uh, permit updates?
Yeah, I found interesting that there's a home being built on Shury Road. So that's maybe a good sign, right? Cause that's near you, but that's where the Route 53 right of way is.
What road?
Shury, right?
Surry.
Surry.
Oh, Surry?
Surry, Shury, yeah, Surry. I'm sorry.
Oh.
S U R R E Y, yeah.
Surry, yeah, that's.
Yeah, no, I saw, I just found it interesting, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's beautiful.
It's gonna be a, uh, very decorative house, so.
So I'll take a look at it when it's done.
Okay, got it.
Does that mean ornate?
What's that?
Oh, super modern?
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay.
Um, okay, so, um, I'll, if there's any questions, I'll take them now and then I'll go into the, the road program. Uh, this is a memorandum, also in the board packet, the February 9th. Uh, this is, it says the information as of the 2023 road program. We've taken a look at the 2014 pavement condition study, with the conditions of the roads in, in the village, to come up with a proposed maintenance plan for this year. So we've got it divided into three separate parts this year. We've got, uh, the base bid, and we've got an alternate one and an alternate number two, um, depending on where the village wants to go with the budget on this. The base bid, uh, is the roads that had been talked about, uh, in previous years, Creekside, Arrowhead, Tribal, uh, Long Grove Road from, uh, 53 to Brightview. That's the section that's, uh, in very bad shape, uh, as Rita reminded me earlier today. Uh, and then Robert Parker Coffin Road from Archer to 83. We've also included, uh, pavement preventative maintenance on North Kruger Road and the Stumpel parking lot, which were, which were, uh, last paved 2021. So, uh, a little bit of various, uh, rears on that, but, uh, we wanna catch the schedule to do that, uh, preventative pavement maintenance on those. So that, uh, that, uh, the base bid, we get, uh, eight hundred and eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Adding soft cost, about eight hundred and eighty thousand. Bid alternate number one, uh, to kinda stretch, um, into what's next, if you will. Uh, we'd get Robert Parker Coffin Road, and this is the section from the bridge to Route 53. This section, uh, actually was scored pretty well in the 2014 pavement condition study, but, uh, with the, all of the construction projects, it, uh, took the beating second to term. So that was scheduled for 28, 29, but it's, it's actually in pretty bad shape and we would recommend, uh, resurfacing that, uh, if the budget allows. The other road grouped with that is Arthur Road, which is a small segment between Old Indian Road and Robert Parker Coffin. Adding the construction and soft cost, those two roads are 232,000. And then, the next, next up from there would be Three Lakes Drive, Three Lakes Court, uh, the Hope of Division, uh, adding the construction cost, the soft cost of that, 323,000. So, in total, you know, the base bid with the alternates, 1.3 million in construction costs, 1.4 million with the soft cost added, which is worth the design engineering and the construction engineering on those. So, um, there's different options. The bid will be set up that the village can always, um, and always reserve the option that they, if prices come in or for whatever reason, you know, the village wants to take a road out, even if it's just one of the roads in bid alternate one, for example. The village will have the right to do that. So tonight, just, I wanted to present this and get direction from the board to, uh, take this from a conceptual cost estimate to do the field work to get the actual, uh, cost estimate and a bid package put together. Um, if, if, uh, direction's given, the next step would be after all of that, after the bid package is done, bring that back to the board along with if the village, uh, wants to use motorfield tax funds. Uh, a resolution that can be passed so that we can, um, inform the state that that, those funds will be allocated for this project.
There's about, um, a little under a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in MFT funds per the last treasurer's report, right? One, one fifty-nine, nine four six. Um, so that's one consideration that, you know, I mean, I would recommend we use the funds, right?
Why wouldn't we not?
Yeah. Um, but also I think it's interesting, cause I, this is a stat that I just, you know, love to talk about, cause we've done good as a village board, right? So roads was a big issue a number of years ago, so we repaved 70% of the roads on our 15-year plan in eight years. And now, um, and thank you, Jeff, for putting this here. If we do the base bid, we'll be at 74% in, in year nine, right? And if we do the, uh, what, the alternate one will be at 77%?
Uh, with alternate one, 75%.
Okay.
And then we do one and two, it goes up to 77.
Seventy-seven percent, okay, got it. Yeah, so, so it's interesting. Um, I don't know, I mean, I'll have to, or how they wanna do it, but I think we should bid it all, and I think we should, you know, uh, start the, whatever we need to do with the MFT funds so that we can use them, but.
How do we think about this in light of a capital improvement budget committee? Or that, we've got it, there's another committee that's trying to work through some priorities also. I agree, I, there's nothing that disagrees with you on that, but how do we work through some of those things?
Well, what I, uh, presented to the committee members and, and staff especially was the list of, uh, projects for the upcoming year, and these projects are listed on, on that capital improvement. What we did was we kept the road projects in with the cycle as it was with the pavement plan, so in the five years out, we will have whatever five years are laid out in that pavement plan. So we, we have it set for capital improvement, it's part of the discussion tomorrow.
Okay. And if we go out to bid right now, we can, if we have other discussions later today or tomorrow.
We can pull back.
We can, we can tweak on all of that. Well, I would, I don't know why we wouldn't go through and use the MFT funds, and they're still coming in roughly 28, 30,000 a month.
Yeah.
Traditionally, the village uses 200,000 in MFT funds. You can use what you have and then what your projected allocations through the end of the year are.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say at least 200, but if you wanna use 20,000 for the remaining month, add that to 160.
We're actually coming in generally higher than the twen- than 200 a year. It's, it's closer to 250 or, yeah.
How do these numbers compare against our budget for this year for road work?
Still work in the budget. And this will be part of the capital improvement, uh, funds too, so.
Plus our budget starts May 1st, so it's usually like construction season is the next fiscal year.
And we usually spend about a million.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we did one, two, one, two last year.
One, two, all in, uh, constructionless.
Right.
So if we didn't do, this afternoon we talked about Archer not looking that bad. The thing is, it's sort of an economy of scale, because if you're doing three lakes, it's right. Do we have something that's in, which I for, I didn't ask you this afternoon, uh, something coming up that's in really bad shape now, that we should consider before something that's really not that bad?
So, yeah, you.
In my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's Archer, you know, and you're exactly right, it's included in here because it is in geographic vicinity of it. So, and that's always the, the most economical way to do growth, is to improve geographically. Um, if that doesn't get done, um, you know, say, you know, the parking lot itself is probably something else that, uh, probably needs, you know, some attention in the next few years, but, uh.
But it's not.
But it's not in bad shape either, so.
We gotta seal coat the parking lot though.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's just an idea, it's just a thought, you know, that it's, it's, what is it, 50 grand?
Yeah.
Fifty-four thousand, something.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of money, but it could probably, you tell me the lifespan, you're the, I, I'm not the engineer, but it's like, we don't have 18-wheelers daily on that thing.
Yeah. Yeah, given the condition of it, you know, can it, you know, um, last another three or four years? Yeah, but including it now, while you're here, as opposed to a standalone project, would be more economical.
Okay. It's a grind of pay.
Correct.
And reclamite is included or not included in these numbers, um, Jeff?
Uh, it is included in the base bid numbers.
But that'll be bid out separately, cause it's a different company, right?
Correct, we, we can separate that in.
Two different contracts, but I wanted to give the.
Right, full picture.
How do you feel about the $32 a square yard?
So that's 2% more than it was last year.
Okay.
Um, and that's, I remember we're seeing things 15 to 20%. Um, I haven't, as a company, we haven't seen any bids come in, but that's the information that we're getting from the contractors.
Do we have any, do we have any insight, info on how busy the contractors may or may not be, given that, you know, they have said there's gonna be a recession this year? That, you know, like sometimes, sometimes they reach high and then you find out, hmm, this might be a little thin, and the, the prices come down, so.
Well, I think that's the question, you never really know the right answer. Uh, put it this way, I was at, uh, a pre-bid meeting last week for a project, and there was two contractors, I asked that very question. One says, there's a lot of work out there, and the other one says, yeah, we're really looking for, for more work here.
So, do we, do we put it out now or do we do it three, four weeks?
So.
Given that.
Well, the, the timeline, okay, so it's gonna, gonna be two or three weeks before, um, the bid package is ready, so we're looking at, uh, earliest coming back, uh, for authorization to bid and passing an MFT resolution first board meeting in March. Which we put the bid probably in early April, because we have to get IDOT to approve it. So with that timeline, um, that, that sets up the construction would start right after Memorial Day, which is traditionally where you want it to happen.
Okay. Plus it allows, that's a partner up with Kildare and so forth.
Correct, yep.
And we, we can, we can not do things. Just because we bid it, we don't?
Correct, yep, it's all in the bid documents, if, even if you get the bid, you bid out the road.
Right.
You reserve the right to take it back.
But we're out the money for the bid.
Chris? Correct. Little questions perhaps. So in the very first bid, the three yards for Creekside Drive, first row is 8,500 square yards. Robert Parker Coffin is almost half of that, 4,700 square yards, but you have to cost charge the road. Why is that? I don't understand.
Okay. Uh, so Robert Parker Coffin Road, um, if you remember last year about this time, we were talking about including that in the project, and it was ultimately taken out because the road base was not suitable for a grind and overlay. A little bit of work, especially towards, so, um, there, the $32 a square yard doesn't, doesn't equate on that one, so the 315 takes into account what's needed on that road.
So there's remedial work?
There's no, there's no asterisk on there, so.
So it's like there's remedial work needed on that particular.
Just a little work, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, question number two. Um, do we have any historical data on how accurate we are on this contingency number? So we budget for the contingency, but how do we actually do year on year? Do we know?
We, correct me if I'm wrong, the last few years, I'm thinking about Kruger, I'm thinking about, um, you know, the contingency we put into all the projects. We've, we've, now, I don't know if it's because, uh, the contractors have done better, but we've come under in each of these budgets. So to have the contingency at, what, what do we have, 10?
Seven. Seven. We used to have it at 10, didn't we?
But we've had 10 or something.
Yeah, we have seven here, and then we dial it in just, once we get the bids, just to make sure we have 10. And that, that'll be, after we get the bids, you'll, the recommendation, you know, the line at the bottom, add, add 10% to the budget just for unforeseen. But as Manager Jackson was saying, you know, so that.
And all that's dialed in, where are we, do we actually hit the number, or do we ever use the contingency? And if so, what percentage of the 10% do we actually use? You know, when you filter that?
Yeah, the last few years, we haven't.
Haven't touched the contingency.
Well, not only that, it's come in under the engineers estimate too. Right, significantly.
Right.
Yeah, no, last year we didn't, but still, even if we, yeah, I hope so.
But see, part, part of that is not knowing what the base is. Cause if the base is, is the pits, then everything goes, and you have to put more of that in than.
Under, understood, it's not like the historical data is drawing any indication.
A couple more questions, uh, maybe a couple more, I don't know. So as you calculate in where we're at, where we're at in terms of percentage of road pay versus the 15 in the plan, have you re-modified those numbers to include the extended life on the roads that have been reclaimed? Or has the plan been modified to include the extended life due to reclamity being applied?
Uh, we've not updated the 2014 pavement condition study now.
Okay, so we're halfway through the plan, we're 75% paved out. If, if we approve all this, right, should we slow the roll down and take some of that extra budget money for the projects instead of marking it for, hmm, I don't know, pathways? Instead of continuing, cause let's say we finish this up in three or four or five years, and we're still more near 2030, which would be the 15-year window. Are we saying we're gonna not have any road maintenance those years and not do anything with the MFT funds? Or are we gonna wait till then to put some money into the pathway system or whatever else you wanna earmark?
So, I mean, there's, there's likely gonna be road maintenance that comes up, you know, uh, reclamite, that's, their, uh, their recommendation, you know, apply it every seven years to keep spending the life, so.
Oh, is that, is that right?
Oh.
Correct.
Who knew?
So.
And you can only.
You can only do it twice.
Twice.
Uh, that's their study, their, um, research on that. And then after that, you know, the oxidation catches up, um, that's usually when the, the subsurface bonds and the oils and things like that.
So does it make sense for us to revamp, relook at our road maintenance plan longer and timeline it out a little bit more accurately or?
So I don't know if you wanna, there's one buck, buck of money, so.
Well, and, and to take, to, to, to take that point, we should be planning out what comes next after 2014, when it happens, that, what, what rate it happens, and we, and that's part of the capital improvement plan, is to turn around and say, okay, do we take this money and apply it to the roads? Or do we take this money and apply it to pathways? Do we take to whatever it is, based on how many years we've got this project? Cause we're doing the capital improvement. Because we're doing the capital improvement plan on five-year, uh, a rowing five-year. So that'll give us the chance to do it, but we should absolutely positively, um, figure out when we're targeting roads for the next, for the next repair, because otherwise, everybody's gone from this table and, and somebody else is sitting here starting a brand-new pavement, pavement plan from scratch.
Yeah, and do it based on where we are now, now to twenty-fourteen.
Exactly.
Well, I would hope that there would be, would be some, um, um, communication between who's here now and who's gonna be here in two years and who's gonna be here in three years, because we weren't here in two fourteen, so that, that continuity, continuity has to be there. But I, I, I love your question about we're spending money on reclamationite. What's this gonna do for us? If, if, if you sold us the program as being good, what, what is the benefit long-term? And I think that's what, and we should, we, we need to know that.
Well, Bobby brought that up, uh, last year.
Probably.
You did, you did, and wanted to have one road with it on and one not, so we could-
Well, no, I wanted to, I, I asked the question.
Yeah.
Questions are good things.
They are great things.
And, and if you don't know where you were, you don't know where you're going.
Right.
Yeah, I know we're not talking budget really, but if we had an extra hundred thousand dollars on that guy.
Is there any research on elect, the, the motor fuel tax we receive going down because of electric vehicles not using gasoline or tax fuels? Has anybody done any research on what we need to anticipate by receiving less because of less? And can, can-
IML.
I, exactly, IML's doing it.
Oh. Close it every, twice a year, three times a year.
And can, can we use motor tax fuel money for charging stations, which we-
I have not seen anything come out from the legislature revamping what, uh, what motor fuel tax dollars. It's very limited.
Here's a fun thing, too, that those cars are a lot heavier, they put more wear and tear on the road.
Correct, absolutely, because the batteries are-
Right.
And they're not contributing to motor fuel tax dollars.
Right, it's an interesting situation, right, yeah.
Yeah, like old fifty-three at Lake Cook Road, where, you know, already it's-
Yeah.
Once again, already.
I, I have a question about the reclamationite, what year did we first start applying reclamationite?
Twenty eighteen.
We're five years in, so does that mean we need to budget to reapply it starting two years from now? The stuff that was applied in twenty eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
Correct, so the reclamationite extends the road by seven years, you know, and then you apply, apply it again, you extend it, re-exedize the pavement.
So that's something to keep in mind for committee also.
Fifteen plus fourteen, is that what you just said? So the average blacktop's fifteen years, and I was saying plus seven. Plus seven, so, and, you know, that's if all of the subbases is, is good, you don't, you know, have overweight vehicles, some of this is-
So when I come to meetings or not?
Well, that's, that's too pretty, because when I come to meetings, I, okay.
So, to the point then, do we recalculate the road program? I mean, if we're adding seven plus years, do we recalculate that all into the fifteen-year equation? And make it a twenty-one-year plan or something?
I, honestly, Chris, I think that we should get it done, and, because this was a big issue a number of years ago, let's get it done. And then we have to have the plan, what do we do after, but let's keep plowing towards getting it done.
I, I think he makes a good point, though, about MST funds every year and thinking about, maybe you don't want to do a big bolus of road, you want to match it to MST.
I, I don't know, I don't know that I've ever asked you this about reclamationite. Um, does it matter whether it's on a fully-used road or a partially-used road? A, 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 does the volume of traffic affect its seven-year life?
Question, I, I mean, my, my- I would think that it does, but I'm gonna get that answer.
I thought they tested it on, I thought they tested it on highways.
Because, you know, they're, yeah, they have tested it on all the roads, Lake County uses it on their roads. Now, um, does Lake County reapply it every five years, for example, as opposed to-
Exactly, exactly.
It's a great, that's a great question.
And we should know that, we, we should know that.
I can find that answer.
Because when, when we look at the whole picture, if, if A, this A road is gonna need it in seven years, but B needs it in five, it changes the, the math.
Trustee Borowski, anything else?
This is my last question on a subject I promise is my last question on a subject. Um, so all of the soft engineering costs on this proposal are hundreds of two hundred thousand dollars. Where does that go, is that all your funds cost for construction, monitoring, engineering costs, or?
So, um, there's, there's three buckets there, there's the pavement corps, the design engineering, the construction engineering. The pavement corps is, um-
They're the work.
Third, yeah, third party, uh, the design engineering and construction engineering, you have to spend, like, our office.
Okay, so a hundred sixteen thousand dollars, um, does it make sense for us to hire our own transportation engineer? And let them work, or find this part of the project to solve?
I would have serious problems with that. I, I, I hear it from the dollars that I would have serious problems, just because I think the sort of person who wants to grow would want to be part of a, a larger enterprise, so that's my view. I may be wrong, but that's my view.
Okay, so let's go around, make sure, any other trustees have any other comments? Um, is everyone comfortable giving direction with what we have here to go out to bid, get the bid spec going? Um, I know there might be, you know, we're, we're not actually approving going out to bid, but giving, letting them get the spec going, and then starting the whole MST thing?
Is that what you need, Jeff?
Yes.
I, I'm definitely comfortable.
Why would we do it in two steps?
No, you're, you're gonna come back, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll, once we have the final budget, um-
Oh, all right.
Ready to go with the MST resolution, we'll come back, that'll be the first meeting in, in March. And then we'll bid it, and then come back, see what we really make, and, or a contract award.
Are you gonna go with that?
I'm good.
Who's supervising or overseeing a hundred sixteen thousand dollar engineering expenditure to make sure it's valid?
I can tell you how that-
I know, right, my eaters, I asked the question, how do I know a hundred sixteen thousand is the right number?
I've looked at the invoices in the past, I don't do that, yeah.
But are they competitive? That's my question.
That I don't know, I, I see the hours.
The expenditure.
I see names and hours, and wonder why somebody's there on Mother's Day, and then everybody says, yes, he is.
I get that, I mean, we've had great results, you know, also, but is it a competitive bid? I care, but I just want to validate that.
Well, didn't we do the professional services evaluation thing that we had to do, right, Vic, wasn't that?
Well, that's part of the process, yes, and for those which are with federal highway funds, there's a special process that's required, and it's a, um, a segregated approach. So, um, that's not for motor fuel tax things unless we're binding them with federal highway things, but at least that is a comparator in terms of, uh, whether or not there's, um, uh, appropriate, um, management of the engineering funds.
Okay.
Not sure.
I, I think you're, you're asking the amount of, it, it, should it be a hundred and twenty, or should it be a hundred?
Yeah, that, I, I, I can't respond to that, but we have a process in place for certain types of our, uh, roadway activities that are mandated by the Federal Highway Administration. And at least in those contexts where Gay Walt Hamilton was doing the work, it was consistent with those standards. So at least there's a comparator of that means for evaluating engineering services and what we're doing outside of that context.
So I should feel comfort in my-
I, I, I'm, I'm not offering comfort, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that there is, you know, there is a, a, a different path that, uh, a different pathway used that does have standards for evaluation that, uh, Gay Walt Hamilton has, uh, been identified as meeting those standards.
So do we pay by the hour or by the project?
Hour.
Are you expensive?
So that's why, uh, Ann looks at all of, uh-
That's why I sometimes look, I don't look at all of them, but I, early on, I looked at all of them.
That's interesting.
All right, so we, we have direction up. I'm gonna keep us moving, are we okay with that? Um, I have, I have a request, um, I know that, uh, we've got a presentation from Brothers Field. Now, there might, I don't know if the, I'll ask you, is the Village Hall con- conversation gonna take a lot less time?
Than would.
Than, than Brothers Field conversation, because, because, um, I was gonna go ahead and pull that up, if you guys are okay with that. You okay with that? So Greg, will you give us an update?
When we, at the January tenth meeting, we had the presentation of conceptual designs, uh, for a discussion of, first of all, were we going to do an expansion here at Village Hall? Um, I'm not sure a firm decision's been made on that, but we had conceptual design options that were presented. There was one option that was more appealing to the board than the other, which was option two. Uh, board members had made recommendations on shrinking office sizes, bringing back the boardroom, reducing the footprint in order to recapture some dollars. And, uh, so what I went back to hold with was questions, and I provided the board with the answers in the staff member that was presented, IT room, uh, ADA compliance, could the workstations be adjusted? Could the manager's office and the assistant manager's office be reduced in size? Uh, hallway was a size that they, uh, believed should remain the same because people would be coming out of the boardroom, space for congregation, access to the bathrooms. There was a footpe- a footprint reduction on, on the, uh, on the size of the facility. Um, we talked about partitions, uh, for, uh, using partitions in the, uh, actual boardroom space to break them down to smaller rooms. Uh, they said that can certainly be done, but it tends to, uh, take up space, and they're not used as often as many people think they can be used. Um, one of the trustees asked about potentially taking the supply room and having it accessible to increase space. Uh, that can also be done. The only, uh, issue that could not, was strongly, uh, advised not to move forward with was, uh, the, um, converting of the bathroom into a break room simply for access, uh, for the public to have access to a bathroom, so that would be the bathroom that's being used now. Um, the project costs did get reduced. We also talked about potential costs of, uh, moving the Ruth Barn if the decision was to move forward. Um, certainly have discussions with the Historic Society, but the dollars are really all over the place. Wold came in at ten thousand dollars, um, we had a vendor come in at twenty-five thousand dollars, and after Jeff and I discussed it, we know it's probably much more than that. Um, there is issues of getting the barn up the hill where the Historic Society threw up conversations, uh, had said they want it relocated. We're also got issues of wires and with ComEd, we've got the, uh, intersection of Old McHenry and, uh, Robert Parker Coffin to navigate, so, am, am I missing things? I'm trying to throw the whole list that we talked about.
Yeah, of course, that Wold's with the ten thousand and ours with the twenty-five thousand, you know, ours was taking a look at moving it over towards the Historic Society property by Temple. So where Wold was anticipating the move, I don't know if that's an apples-to-apples or an apples-to-oranges comparison.
So we've adjusted the dollars to reflect a higher dollar amount if the board decides that, uh, the expansion here is the right way to go, and then if we have to turn around and relocate the Ruth Barn. So those dots, those dots were all calculated. Project cross, cost, including the estimate for the Ruth Barn, uh, and relocation of the septic field, which wasn't figured into the Wold costs, is one point four million. We have one point zero seven in, um, ARPA funds. So, uh, what I had suggested to the board in my memo, as well as managers' report, or the various options, move forward with the expansion of the existing Villa, Village Hall to include identified sources for funding beyond the funds available through ARPA. Meet with the Long Grove Historic Society to discuss the relocation of the Ruth Barn. Engage Wold architects for architectural services, RFP development and/or project management, or develop an RFP, RFP for architectural services, RFP development and project management, should we, should the board choose not to go with Wold. Work with Wold architects to further downsize the redesign. Revisit discussions on onsite identification for new, or for onsite, meaning a, a difference site identification for new or remodel construction, and revisit discussions on leasing office space.
What are you, yeah, what are you looking for tonight?
Well, there, one more point, a question was asked, uh, I think by trustee Borowski, on how much it would cost for ground-up construction. Uh, we asked that question, uh, they said one point, uh, six, I believe, to, to two million. Um, that was, um, uh, providing we had the site, the property already secured, and not being able to, uh, factor in water sewer, uh, septic or well.
How much is that per square foot, do we know?
Off the top of my head. Didn't ask the question.
One story, two story?
Didn't ask the question. I probably said something along the same lines of what we were doing here. Square foot is right.
One square foot.
Correct.
I don't think it's this room.
I have it in the drawing.
Um, God, is it eight hundred, six hundred, eight hundred square feet, depending on?
It has to be like twenty-four.
Yeah. We had that at some point.
Twenty, twenty-four by twenty, like four hundred and eighty square feet.
Well, you're looking for the excessive question about the, the barn. Has anybody looked at taking it apart?
I think we have to, we talked-
I didn't ask, thank you.
Eleven hundred twenty-eight square feet, according to the-
How many?
Eleven twenty-
No, that's the new one.
Taking it apart?
How big is that?
Yeah, we, we- We just looked at moving it, so.
It's substantially larger.
Yes.
Do you know if the Historic Society ever looked at taking it apart instead?
I don't know, Greg, uh-
Well, Jane's here, so.
I, oh, there she is.
Yeah.
Have, have you ever looked at taking it apart?
No, we haven't, but Doug, Doug, the maintenance guy, no, he's been all over the building. Um, and he says he's actually more structurally sound than us, although Al's had a lot worse than me inside.
Yeah, I, yeah, the outside is pretty good.
And we would really have a problem with, with, we've had a discussion about this, the executive board, the, the, the- Discussion about this, and we would have a problem with having it taken apart. I think that there'd be so many problems that could occur with that. Is it possible for it to be put on a trailer?
Well, wouldn't it be helpful to know if it could be done at what cost?
I don't even know, where would you go, where, where would you go to find a method like that?
Well, I, I-
A contractor.
House moving.
Those, those, the, the, the-
The house moving, they put it on-
Heaven vehicles, get all the time.
Contractors will move it up.
Right, so that kind of was looking around too, just out of curiosity. But, I mean, who would go through to take it apart?
Yeah, a building contractor.
Someone that's specialized in working historic-
But, yeah, you want the historical data.
Well, when I don't, I don't want to see it become the tail wagging the dog. And, and if, if that's a reasonable, I think we should know it. Um, you know, obviously with, with their, you know, consent, but, but it just seems like, it doesn't look like it would move well. It seems like it's got some holes in it.
That would have been more secure inside, look, it's the outside of the truck.
He's gonna guarantee that?
Oh, he's an engineer, so, you know, I mean-
I, I gotcha.
And nothing, anything he's ever done is in the field, so, but when he says something, I kind of trust him. And he spent, um, probably, he spent a whole morning over here going over everything over here, the, the barn and, and he, measuring, he drew it, he drew a picture, so he had these dimensions exactly, so it's the O C P and everything else, so I kind of trust that judgment.
It, it, again, again, it's a question, not a commitment, it's a question.
I don't know where to go, but, I mean-
Well, I, I'm, I'm not asking you to.
Okay.
I, it would be nice if you knew, but I hope somebody will know.
Square foot.
Yeah, I mean, it just have to-
Oh, you asked a question, I'm not sure it's been owned yet.
Yeah, it's a-
Yeah.
He wrote some notes, so I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking good things. He wrote some notes, so I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking good things.
Yep, got the box that I can check for the next meeting, so I can do this.
Well, the barn builders do things like that.
So, so we're, I mean, so what, I think we were trying to advance the ball a little bit, right Greg? So, yeah, we have a little more time than we thought, right? But we need, if we're gonna, uh, move forward, we, I think one of the first things we have to do is hire an architect. Is that what you're saying?
If we are going to move forward with the expansion, the next step would be to engage an architect.
Get my question answered?
Sure.
How big is this room? It doesn't seem like that proposed room is much bigger, which means I am not interested in downsize.
Oh, yeah, no, it's bigger, but yeah, no, that's, that's, if there's anything that we should be doing here, it's looking at making sure this room is as big as possible, right?
Exactly. If we're gonna touch this, let's not do it twice. Don't need to buy things twice.
It's definitely bigger.
Usually have a quicker measure. And I don't have it with me.
Well, let's see. I mean, thirty by fifteen maybe, so what is that?
The current one or the proposed?
Our current one. Yeah, the, the new ones, oh, twelve hundred square feet, so it's significantly bigger.
Know how big this one was, I'm trying to get a sense of proportion.
Yeah, no, we had that, so let's say, yeah, thirty, and then we go. It's gonna be closer to twenty, six hundred square feet, six hundred, it's double. We'll get, we'll get the exact, hey Ann, about six hundred, we'll get the exact. And that rings a bell too, yeah.
It's in the first presentation that they gave to us, I don't have it in my fingers.
Yeah, we, no, we have it, but yeah.
Just not with us.
The hallway and the offices are as tiny as this, so.
Uh, I think we should, I, I think this is our best bet for our funds. I think it's something that makes sense that we need, we know we need, that upstairs needs help. We need more space, and I think that now.
A lot of help.
In a position to be responsible with it, yes, you know, take advantage of that. The ARPA funds.
Okay.
Chris?
I just don't like the flow of that layout. There's a lot of dead space, that whole hallway they mentioned, yeah.
There's a response on that too, though.
There's a lot of dead space in that office.
That leads into, yeah, that would.
Yeah, that's dead space, and then the flow of customer faces. Just seems like there's an awful lot of space. I was actually gonna color it in last night and my printer fails, I couldn't. Cause I wanted to see visually how much is dead space versus.
So the architect's, uh, um, in the packet, right? We can look at that during the schematic design. But my current thought is that we'll need a slightly wider area for the purposes of congregating before and after the meetings. I don't know.
Is part of this, what are the guiding principles behind this layout? Cause I think part of it may be not touching the existing building.
Yeah, I know that building is kind of difficult.
Yeah, yeah, so, that, that would be the, rather than us being architects, but what are the guiding principles and do those make sense to us?
Right, so how much cost is coming from like connecting this building to the new building versus plopping a new box right next to it? I, I don't know if I accept a random number of two million dollars for a box. I don't understand, I don't, I don't accept that, you know, we need to, I, I think we need to look into that a little bit more detail. I find it hard to believe that that much to build a box.
I was. That another architect would have some better ideas.
What would be the guiding principles we would ask for?
That's what, or a better floor.
Uh, the one thing I do wanna bring up about this site too, and it may not be a large amount of space, but there's some ADA compliance issues that have to be met over there, which would be wider space to get through wheelchair access points and things along those lines.
Now, this architect, uh, is used by, what, Deer Park and?
Uh, I believe Third Lake just engaged them to do the same thing.
So Ann, Jeff just looked it up, this room is five forty-four.
Thank you.
So the proposed one is just a hair over double that.
Thank you.
Um, hey, so, so, um, let's just keep going, so, um, maybe we're not in a position yet, but, um, getting an architect moving on this, are you in agreement with that? One suggestion was to look at an alternative architect, but.
The fact that Wold designed Deer Park's building influences my response to that. I, I like what they did. I think that it's, um, it suits its setting beautifully, and it suits the needs of that community. I know that, on the other hand, I know that government typically looks for what's less expensive, what, what, what's efficient as opposed to what is, um, what's designed and what makes it a nice place to work, a nice place to be, sort of thing. Um, I, I would be in favor of someone that does the job, but is, and is also a nice place to work, a nice place to meet whoever is coming to our village. Um, without, it doesn't have to be excessive, it just has to be thoughtful. So, what I have seen of Wold I'm in favor of, I, I don't like either of the two choices we've been given. I think there, there are flaws, there are issues with each one, they, you know, it's preliminary, I, I hope. Um, I, in my soul, in my limited experience, believe that building new from the ground up is gonna be less money than working around what exists because, um, there's gotta be hidden stuff here that nobody's counting on. Whatever it is, it's gonna be. Remodel is always more than new from the ground up, period. Yes, as far as the, the historical nature of that part of the building, you know, many times in, especially in government buildings, I'm thinking Springfield, they rope off the room, and you get to peek in and you see how they used to use it, right? It's preserved, but it doesn't, it, it's not the tail that wags the dog. As long as I'm, design wise, I, I would like to see something that is multipurpose. You know, the only reason for the curtains is if you're gonna rent the place out, you know, and somebody needs a small space and they're gonna pay for X, and somebody needs a big space, so you close the curtain. If we're gonna use it for a community center, what, what are its uses? I don't think we've talked about that. What, what do we want? I don't know the answer, I don't think we've arrived at that. And, and I, I agree with your questions, and, and with Bobby's questions, they're like, we're not there yet. I'm okay with Wold. If, if the question that's on the table is, are we, am I okay with Wold? Yeah, long, long, short, short, yeah.
And then what it looks like is up in the air, right? Okay.
But we have to tell them.
Yeah, we'll have to come to consensus on that.
Right.
How about Kent?
I wanna move forward.
Okay, you wanna move forward?
Sooner rather than later.
Forward is what?
I'm fine with the proposal. I, I agree it's gonna be tweaked and, and, you know, modified and, and finalized. But we can talk this to death for two years, and we still have a suboptimal workspace over there and a suboptimal meeting space here. At some point, we gotta say this is it and move forward.
Hey Jenny, you wanna comment? Trustee Michelle?
Um, sure, I, um, I'm comfortable with Wold, I think, um, I do like their previous work. Um, I would like to see it this tweaked. I, I've always been a little bit more in favor of a, a new structure, but, um, I'm also, um, fine with tweaking this and moving forward.
Okay, so, the, um, for what we need to get done tonight, does this give you some direction?
Yeah.
I, I think this is fair, what does success look like without masticating it for a meeting? I, I can, I'm sorry, just use that, but that's, what do we want?
We want a suitable workspace for staff and a suitable meeting space for us.
And.
Anything else is.
I, what I took away from it sitting here is a mixed review on, do we do something ground up or do we do an expansion on this building? And, and I thought we were going the way of expansion, that's why we took the next step. And, and it's up to the board, and it's certainly up to the board, I'm just, I, I guess I'm not sure what the final.
Alright, so let's just go ask expansion of the existing building.
Hello, I have another question, may I?
Oh, please do.
So it's the same question I just told him Jeff on. Um, the Wold proposal in the document, if I'm reading it right, was like eighty-nine thousand dollars for architectural services and construction oversight and all that. We need to competitively bid that. I'm not ready to go, hey, Wold, you're, you're the hottest thing in town, it's because I.
That was an option I presented was to turn it and go back.
We need to competitively bid that somehow, or at least get some counter proposals.
Well, we, we are not able to competitively bid it based on price. There's a statutory process that's involved. It's really a determination of best qualified, and then you can negotiate price, and whether you wanna continue with that, uh, firm or not, is up to you, but you can't be, uh, doing it as a matter of, well, this guy's going to charge us only X.
Understood, so are you saying then that we would have to go through that statutory process of looking at the best qualified, qualified contractors, and then we pick one from that bunch here?
Uh, yes, unless, excuse me, unless we have a, an existing relationship with an architectural firm, we would have to go through that process.
Can, can we look at firms that may sense their thinking of how we should stand?
You can ask them to, whether they would, you know, actually.
They may not, but, but if they did, um, they, they have to be, because you can get an architect to do anything you want. Um, it, it, it doesn't matter, and, and perhaps, maybe that's our flaw in that we haven't really, not really, told them what we want. All we know is that we're, what we've got, and, and somebody put a bi- bigger box on it. Um, and, and so, that's why I, I, I think in terms of, of looking at another architect, um, and I, I'm not sure that that would be our answer, and probably our biggest answer is that we need to clarify exactly what it is we want.
Yes, that, that's, that's, I, I would like to, like, can we say we can take our next meeting some amount of time and figure that out, and put that, because otherwise, we've done this before, and then we go, oh, but I wanted this, or I thought this.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and, and that's just, nobody's gonna wanna work with us, and we'll waste everybody's time and, and frustration.
So, seemingly, no matter what we do, we, we're preserving the existing building and upgrading it, and we have a narrow strip of land over there that we can work on, but not anywhere else. The shape of the building, the U shape, really is what it is.
That's what I'm asking, do we have to preserve that existing building? So that seems to be a, an assumption. Is it, I agree with you, I don't, I, I wanna move forward, but I also don't wanna.
What's the alternative?
I'm proposing we take another meeting to, one, one meeting, exactly one.
Maybe a workshop.
Yeah, so we'll either, yeah, there, so either, you know, I think, so, we're not gonna, we're not gonna advance the ball today, there's too many different opinions, so we're gonna have to either do a workshop or in another meeting, we're gonna have to talk about.
Here's a question, if we did new, where?
Tear this down.
Uh, I don't know about that.
What are you gonna do with it? You don't care?
What, what are you gonna do?
They, they put it out on a rail. And, and rightfully so, and rightfully so.
This is not historic.
If you take, if you tear this down, you should run out of town.
You're just talking about this, this hall, not that building, just this.
Exactly, this room is not historic, so you take it down and you put a two-story, or you put whatever, but.
Put an elevator?
So, maybe, do you have to preserve this? I don't know.
Well.
How about next to Midas Musler?
Anyway, so I think we're stuck here.
That was a flippant comment, I think eighty-three.
It wasn't meant to be flippant.
Otago Nate, Otago Nate and three?
Location for Village Hall, it's visible, people can find it, and it's like right there.
Right across the street.
I know we've had that discussion, but also don't mean to derail it, um.
Lemon Fields?
Just saying, there's, there's, there might be options, I don't know.
So everyone okay if we park this and we either do workshop or figure out what to do with it? Cause we're stuck, so.
I, I thought a few minutes ago we were on restoring this building.
I'm a hundred percent behind restoring this building and adding on to it, that's what I wanna do.
This is, this is what we keep doing, back and forth and back and forth, and, and, and I think it's circular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this on a slab?
Yes.
So we could go up, or we.
I don't know if we can go up, I don't know.
Is that, do we know?
Oh, no.
Can we have a workshop and promise ourselves that whatever we come to, we will agree to move forward?
Then you're gonna have a square or a circle.
We can't keep visiting. We're annoying ourselves and we annoy everybody else around us.
You can't rule by committee either.
Understand, I guess, everybody needs to be heard.
I'm sure they factor that into the price, you know, it's like, oh, God, there's a committee, you know?
So we need to spend some time, and we're gonna have to set it up in a way where we can look at different things and get it out of the table, and, and advance the ball, so, I'd say we do that.
Do a committee of the whole in advance of the next board meeting, or do a committee of the whole?
Okay, yeah. Advance the next board meeting, let's try to get a little bit of, can? Jenny, you okay with that? Trustee Michelle?
Sure.
That was convincing. Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna, um, whistle along at this point, we're stuck.
Can I ask a?
Uh, nothing's quick when you answer a question.
No, this shouldn't, it shouldn't. Why is it I have one bar when I'm here? Why, does our staff have to work for one bar?
Who's your provider?
Verizon.
That's why.
Verizon?
I don't think so.
Verizon, that's the problem.
Staff works with one bar.
And we are not saying anything.
Thank you, because it's only when I'm, it's only when I'm here I get one bar. Do you?
I've got three.
I have four bars with T-Mobile.
Yeah, I'm full with T-Mobile too, but anyways, we're not doing a commercial on long distance companies or phone companies?
I don't care about the provider, I care about what kind of, what kind of service, internet service currently, staff has here. Is it difficult for them to work because it's so darn slow?
Yes.
Well, they have cable.
I disagree.
What?
I disagree, I, I think when we put the hotspots in, I think it increased our, our, uh, speed immensely. I have no problem in my, in, in the luxury attic.
You're, you're talking about on your mobile?
Cause you're upstairs.
But it's not on, right?
About internet access.
Yeah, internet access is wired to the building.
I, I get it.
Okay. And this is wireless?
I, I get that also.
Okay.
I get that also. When I use my laptop, I'm okay. But every time I'm here, I get no service.
Yep, you'll have to switch, uh, companies, I guess. Or they'll switch companies where they have something called a femto cell where they can put a, a little hotspot for your carrier in the building, so.
Okay, alright.
We're off, we're off the beaten trail. Alright, so, thank you everyone on that. I'm gonna move us back, um, to the regularly scheduled program, and it's discussion and consideration, a referral to the plan committee, zoning deals for amendment to develop for the Brothers Field, eighteen fifty-five, project redout P U D. And I think, um, is it Bradley is gonna do this, Jesse are you gonna? Jesse's gonna do the presentation, okay. Come on up here, um, and then I have a PowerPoint that, you want me to share that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for waiting, so, I thought, I thought that was gonna be the easier one, but I was wrong. Totally wrong.
Nothing's easy.
Uh, let me, uh, get the presentation.
Can anyone get the longer narrative of the thirty pages?
I did, I read it too.
This is, this is nowhere near exhaustive, this is just kind of a, a quick review, I'll make it brisk, and then if you have questions, we can go back and cover any details that you want to, but, uh, we'll just kinda hit this.
It was a good history.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to give you, a little bit of, of how we got here, and, and as always, we're willing to answer anything you wanna dive into, but, um, for the sake of time, I'll go quickly and then we'll.
At least if I can make this work.
It's come a ways since we met, gosh, was that almost a year ago? Uh, just not quite, it's about a year ago that we kinda started this, and, um, I know it's been confusing for everybody because it's pretty new, confusing to us too, so thank you for the patience with it. Uh, we'll just kinda run through this, so, uh, go ahead and move on to the next one. Uh, as the pandemic hit, all the businesses incredibly hard, we had to react, adapt and survive. That's more speaking about the dance studio because we were up and running at that point. Taking on the name Brothers Field, we had the idea of showing movies and things outside. Obviously, when pandemic hit, everybody was shut down. We had no business. We don't sit well. So we started doing some things outside. And go ahead and click to the next one there. Thanks to you all here at the village, we were able to move pretty quickly during the pandemic. I felt like Long Grove as a village reacted really quickly, not just for us, but for a lot of people. The Egghead Hop Chocolate Fest, Fairy Tale, outdoor movies, and I won't go through all of them, but we've done things with a lot of the businesses in town, as well as created some new things that gave us traffic, gave people activity. It was, started out as just going to be a couple of movies, but then the feedback from the locals and the people who came out really encouraged us to continue to do more. Something that's specific about ours is it promotes human interaction, counteracts the negative effects of isolation, sedentary lifestyle and digital obsession. We really try to encourage people to get outdoors and spend time here. And that's why I think it has been such a hit, because a lot of people recognize it and that's a concern. We feel it's an important piece of downtown that brings us together. It's an important piece of adapting to the new economic norm as we, as we've seen everything change. And even as we moved here in two thousand and fifteen, the town had a lot of trouble with the retail business changing. So the new thing, seeing a retail business hybrid between that and experience-based market, we feel this is really complimentary to both. Eighteen fifty-five, this is a concept that we decided to work with that old red building. And I hear you guys kind of talking about this building. It's very similar. If you remember back in two thousand and nineteen, you approved the demolition of about eight thousand square feet of the old furniture store. And it was connected to this building, which is called eighteen fifty-five because it was built in eighteen fifty-five. So it's just kind of a tribute to that. We originally really wanted to keep this, but as we've had contractors coming through over and over again, I think you mentioned that trying to rebuild what's there is just not feasible and we got to start over. So we're going to try to find a way and work through the rich history, but also give it the up-to-date accessibility, like handicap accessible restrooms and all the things that, amenities that people are going to want coming into town. The eighteen fifty-five really is pretty much like a restaurant as you're used to, but it's a little more geared towards the private parties and events versus just general dining. So we'll offer food, dining as well, but large open space as well for a variety of uses. This kind of gives you a timeline of what's going on with Brothers Field and eighteen fifty-five. They really are working together, eighteen fifty-five being indoors and having a patio on the back will run year-round. It's close to seven days a week because we can make that happen. And then the Brothers Field runs the six months generally from May first to about Halloween. We would do that and they would work together on both those cycles. Our request, so to get toward this plan, we're asking for the referral to the zoning board commission for the eighteen fifty-five plans to move forward, as well as to work with the Brothers Field. Another thing we're asking for is a request of the Brothers Field business licenses and transitional liquor licenses. We understand that this building is going to take some time. We're ready to go as soon as we get some approvals. We want to make this building happen as soon as possible, but we won't be able to get it out before this year. The Brothers Field has really fueled quite a bit of the expansion. It feels quite a bit with what we wanted with eighteen fifty-five. So we are seeking a transitional liquor license to do in two thousand and twenty-three what we were able to do in the COVID declaration, I think you'd say, for the previous three years. And we would request that the eighteen fifty-five be considered for business in Long Grove. This is just kind of a nice little photo of it. Old McHenry is on the right. And then Historical Lane is right across there across the top. So the tents that you see there, the tiki tent is the smaller one, and then the larger tent there, that is all what we've been doing so far. What you see in the red box, that's where the existing Quinton House, the red building is now. This one is the expanded version of that, and you can see. Far on the left is where the dance studio is, and there's an additional field behind the dance studio. That's generally one where we have movies and that's where a lot of the kids like to play. So I think there's a couple of drawings on the building. Oh, there's the inside, so you can kind of see. It's about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-person venue on the inside, so not super large as we had considered in the past. But we think this is an important move. We've had a lot of fests for parties about this size. We feel this is going to be a reasonable size that can operate on its own. You'll see the bathrooms there. There is a door that leads towards Historical Lane. We do recognize that there's a little bit of a bathroom issue in the downtown. So we're hoping to utilize this building and alleviate some of that. The kitchen there is not a full-on restaurant kitchen. It's more of what's called a caterer's kitchen, where you can warm food. We wouldn't be preparing it from scratch there. It would be precooked. And then we would warm it there or one of the private parties or events, we bring in our catering from local restaurants and others as well. And there you can see, the picture's on the bottom left, that's the house as is. The architect drawings near that. We want to save as much as we can. There's not a ton of specifics on Old Red, as we call it, but you see there's the medallion, the little half pinwheels and things that are there. And new construction, although larger, mirrors exactly what is there now in style. And the colors would be the same too. We have no intention of changing, we want the red and white. So I think that is it. That's like, hopefully, I know that was a short version, but just have your.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. I figured we'd start there and then if you want to expand, we can go wherever you'd like.
Good as soon we read. Read the stuff you give us.
If I could ask you one question, aside from the development, but as you do whatever it is you're going to do to that building, if there are things that have historical significance, would you please contact them, the historical society back there, and make certain that it gets saved by them?
Absolutely, you know, absolutely. Like Aaron Underwood, he's got a few names from the city, so.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, he gave you the list.
Oh, geez.
But yeah, absolutely, anything that we can has any historic value. And there's stuff like this little well in there. We want to incorporate that into the building. So we've already got plans for some of it, but some of the ones for the ways. Yeah, there's some pretty neat things and we'll make sure that's in the next one.
So Greg wanted to make a few comments, but I think we have two items on the agenda. One was to refer to the plan commissioning zoning board of appeals. The second one is discussion of a license, a transitional liquor license, so they can operate the same way in two thousand and twenty-three while they get the new building built. So you want to make.
Could you clarify something for me? The liquor license, is that just your business or is that our business?
It's our, it's your business. It's our business.
Okay.
Yeah. That's not mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, we have to decide.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. The, we've been, we've been with the Brothers Field development team since they began this process about ten months ago. And so I transformed from a much bigger project to a smaller scale project with the outside-inside exploited business. Part of the urgency on this too is the way that Brothers Field currently operates was permissible because of the latitude provided the mayor or the village president in response to, as part of government's declaration. That goes away May eleventh. The governor's already made it clear it's going away and it's coinciding with the time that it's going away on a national level. So the two, two things again that are before the board, and it's what I provided in the staff memo. The first one is item twenty, which is to decide if the concept of the eighteen fifty-five Brothers Field combined should go to the planning commission zoning board of appeals because for certain, there needs to be amendments to the PUD as it relates to that type of business because it's not allowed in the current PUD. The second part of this requires no legislative action on the part of the board, but more from a direction standpoint for myself, the village attorney, and our zoning staff, planning staff to determine how a transitional operation would work. Business license, we'd have to decide, does this business meet our current codes? And if not, how do we address that? Certainly, any liquor license has to come back before the village board because it requires an amendment to the village code based strictly on the numbers of licenses. Plus, if this would be a different type of license for this transitional period. So that's the action from the board, or the board could take no action. That's the, that's the third option, so.
To me, the liquor license, that's business as usual. That's, we, every, we have exactly as many as liquor licenses as we ever intend to use. And so every time somebody adds a new one, we have a new conversation, right?
Correct.
It's really business as usual from that perspective. I mean, you've got this ownership structure that you put in there. Which one is going to hold a business license?
Yeah, Brothers Field LLC would umbrella the both. Really, eighteen fifty-five is nothing more than a brand. It's not an official corporation at all.
It's not a DBA or anything. Yeah. So why do we need to use the word transitional?
Because the business doesn't exist right now. Well, there's another element to it. I mean, the use itself is not a use that is.
That I get.
Contemplated.
That I get.
And so if we're going to have a liquor license for a use that's not authorized, we're going to have to make some kind of accommodation in the code to address that. It would be sort of a hybrid of our special event license because it's not an authorized use right now. That's, that's the. We've been, the problem is that this has been very much a reactive situation, largely because of COVID. I mean, you know, it was given birth from COVID and the emergency actions to try to keep activity in the downtown. And so there's been a little bit of, forgive my pun, license taken with the licenses in order to make this work. We're now pulling out of that emergency condition. And so when we went and looked at what do our code options say versus what's actually happening, the two don't overlay nicely and fully. So we need to do some clarification so that what they want to do during this, you know, let's assume that they're going to ultimately get an approval for their long-term one with eighteen fifty-five, they're still going to be doing something that is altogether distinct from what our code.
Having a tiki bar on an open field that hasn't given.
That is distinct. So that's, that's what we're talking about in terms of the transition.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? You're looking at me.
You appear to have a cartoon bubble over your head. That's what your face looks like to me at least.
Is that what?
Is that what you were looking?
Yeah, yes. Well, so, yeah, Preston, you're right.
I was just thinking about the public watching this. And I want the public to make certain that they understand this was with full consent. This was not something you were doing that wasn't right. We consented quietly to what you were doing because it was good for us, the village, and it was good for you and the downtown. And so we need to, I don't, I don't know what the right word is, but we need to organize it on paper now. But I like what you did and do, and it's so good for so many people. And it brings in a whole, a whole group of people who weren't here five years ago.
That's a really good point to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did do the special events department for everything along the way, so you guys were.
You're trying to be tricky.
Yeah, we were generally hitting them about a day or two before the event. We got them done.
Right, right.
Preston Brodsky, you're looking like you're going to say something.
I love the indoor concept of eighteen fifty-five. Full steam ahead. I hate the outdoor concept.
I realize what you've done. I appreciate what you've done. It's taken a lot of energy and effort on everybody's part. I think the word is publicly, not quietly, implies you're doing something sneaky. Hopefully approved it.
You're better, better.
But I just don't know if that's what I want for the future of downtown Long Grove. I don't know if a wide outdoor bar and field and those activities, especially with the proposed hours that. That have been, I think I read the documentation. We've got, we have a festival every month, basically. We've got the micro brewery down the street. If this venue's running in full operation and all three are going on at once, I think it creates kind of a challenge for the neighbors, the residents. And to me, it's not Long Grove. It does not, we are, sorry, I hate to say that and like that, but if we move forward, I think we need to restrict it very, very heavily. I mean, the sound ordinance issue, the hours of operation. It can't be an outdoor party venue. Every weekend, if I lived down there, I'd go crazy, I would. Would not appreciate it at all. I love the indoor venue. I think it's awesome. I think it's a great idea. Plan commission needs to look at parking. They don't know where we're going to put all those cars.
I had the same question.
Right, so plan commission needs to look at that. I think we need to refer to the plan commission and let them do their diligence and get a lot of public input. I'm just not a big, big fan of the outdoor venue.
Any comments over here?
I agree with Chris, a hundred percent. I don't, I like, I like the events. And there is, there is a certain visitor we get that we didn't get previously. And I like that. I think you're very creative. And I, I think you're so creative, you can figure a way, I hope, to find a, find a building that you could put what is currently an outdoor tiki bar in. God knows, we have plenty of empty ones around here. Or something, you know, I, I do. Pardon?
We can move the bar. Just kidding, go ahead, keep talking.
That's it. Maybe we could move the barn over there. But I, 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 during COVID is one thing, to continue it beyond sets of precedents. And I, and I, I do think that the noise that emanates from it is theoretically in conflict with whatever sort of environment the other owners are trying to accomplish with their places. And it, it, you know, if the brewery wants to play opera and you've got heavy metal.
Sounds like Queen.
Period. Springsteen, something. I, I, the building is beautiful, eighteen fifty-five, all for it. I, I have a really hard time. I, I have a hard time referring it to the plan commission with the tiki bar.
And, you know, I understand that they're concerned with that. One thing that I think has been unique with this in terms of parking, in terms of music and other businesses, we've been doing this for three years. And that's not something that normally could be done when presenting a new business. So this is, it's unique in that. There's those parking, the volume of people that we've had come through was a very, very busy season last year. And the parking worked out between Archer and Stempel, between the brewery and us and Shatterbox, and we incorporate that. When it comes to the larger fests, we don't allow for private things. We've just kind of become, as you saw in public, the handout, more of an oasis. We don't combat any of that. So it is something that, I understand those concerns, but we've actually seen those unfold and it's worked out really well. We haven't had issues with the traffic or problems with individuals or people. One thing with the hours, you know, we kind of put the hours of open, but when it does come to sound and it is important to us, we're not looking to exasperate the neighbors, you know? We are looking to exist and it is a downtown business, so we want the downtown to flourish even more than it is. We definitely want that, but we're not looking to exasperate the neighbors. When you see something that might be like a nine AM or an eleven PM or a midnight, that's just what we're looking to be able to be inside or open if there's going to be parameters that restrict that. When it comes to stuff like concerts, noise, even we had talked with the last one, I think we did, I don't know if it was the Blue Spur or the Fall Fest or someone, it's like, hey, can we move this up, have a hard cutoff at, I think it was ten PM with that one or something like that. You know, that, that we all understand. So we're not necessarily looking for this free rein of, hey, it says we can be open this time, this time, so we're playing our music. There's much of what we do that doesn't cause a lot of sound. There's much of what we do that doesn't cause a lot of sound. There are some things like Blue Spur that cause a lot of sound, but not everything we do does that, and certainly not from all hours of operation.
I think there's a flip
We can revisit how you guys would feel comfortable with moving forward.
I think there's a flip side to the sound too, and that's, you know, that's a buzz. That is excitement. I think that that may be part of what you were speaking of, Bobby, but there's an excitement about that. I figured that we would solve not noise till midnight outside eventually, but that inside noise, fine, somebody wants to have a wedding party, go for it, but outside challenging.
So help me understand that the first action we have is to refer it to the Plan Commission. Right, and then the second one is a different action about the liquor license. So
Does Jenny have a point of view? Because she's actually about as close as I am to it.
Yeah, Jenny.
I do. I can hear events downtown. Sometimes it's annoying, but most of the time I, it's not a big deal. I think if I was closer, I probably would probably be a little bit more unhappy with it. But that being said, I like outdoor spaces. I, you know, since the pandemic, I actively look for things that I can do outside. I don't like to be inside. So I, I like the idea of the outdoor space and the movies and the events not undercover. So I would be all for pushing it towards the Plan Commission.
Are we in a position that somebody wants to make a motion?
Someone second.
Second.
Okay, so that was so quick. Moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer. Sorry, you got beat, Jenny.
Darn it.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee Broowski.
A question, so the options would be what? Not to move it forward or move it forward with just kind of just let the Plan Commission do its deal and let it come back at the risk of it gets down to the end of it, we say this outdoor thing is a great idea or a terrible idea, or what's the process?
The Plan Commission
Do you need to do that?
No, no, there is a, in addition to amendments to the PUD itself, there will have to be some text amendments to enable the types of activities that are being proposed in the way that they're being conceived. And so our code says, when we're talking about amendments to the code, they have to be referred by the board first. And so this is simply allowing the process to move on. There's going to need to be a full application made to the Plan Commission. And it will, following public notice, have a hearing or, you know, multiple hearings if they determine that that's necessary to truly vet the issue. They'll make a recommendation like any other zoning matter, it'll come back to you all. And at that point, you'll be making a decision on the ultimate use. Now, the other part that is item 21 on the agenda is not related to the referral to the Plan Commission. That's, the reason why they're two separate items is that while interrelated, they are distinct decisions for the board to make, or discussions, I should say, because the second one is not yet a decision point.
Can I defer my vote for a moment?
I think you can, yeah.
Trustee Misha.
Hi.
O'Connor.
Yes.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, so, go ahead.
That's all right, it's already got the
We're going to, okay, so motion carried, okay. And then, and then, so the next one is discussion, go ahead, sorry.
Never, we're fine.
Okay, discussion of a request by Brothers Field for the transitional liquor license, right? In operation, so Vic, do you need to provide us some help here? What can we do or can't we do?
Well, I think that the discussion tonight is really to bet whether and, whether we want to continue this, whether there needs to be any particular changes from what has been the evolving operations so that frankly, we can come back to you with a draft ordinance that will accommodate them in a way that will accommodate you.
Do you foresee any change in, any change in what we consider normal today from the Plan Commission activities that could affect how the license is drawn?
Well, again, the license is intended really just to handle for this year because at the end of the, at the end of the Plan Commission process, we may need to recalibrate the whole thing.
Yeah, okay, I guess, okay.
So if he has no building now and wants to open the tiki bar, under what parameters do we think the last three years have operated?
Well, that's, that's what we really need to look at because we were talking temporary use, special use, we were looking at the code.
Pardon me? That's kind of where I, well
Yeah, it's Okay, so now you know where our discussions have been, trying to, trying to give you something a little more than, oh, you know what we've been doing.
Just like Jeff
I'm Italian, so this works for me.
Show off on Saturday in the ski.
It doesn't work as a lawyer. Yeah, that's exactly what we've been trying to figure out exactly where it fits or how we have to make adjustments.
How do we describe what we've done so far? And do we want to make any tweaks for the coming
Well, and what we will try to do is to fashion something that does replicate what's been done, but subject to, I mean, if there are particular concerns that you have, let's air them now so that we can put them into this amendment and make sure that that's going to be within the confines of their operations for the, this transition period.
Can I ask another question too, because it didn't come up here? So we were technically using the special event application to provide formal approval for them to do these different things. With this liquor license, would it work the same way?
Generally, yes. I mean, in terms of how we would go about it, I'd like to actually try to do it as a series of scheduled activities, so you know, it's not, you know, we had a lot of the, oh yeah, it's Thursday, guess what we want to do on Friday, you know?
Yeah.
I think we want to try to avoid that.
Yep.
But in terms of series of discreet events, subject to having an approved calendar, I think that might be the way that we want to handle it. I, again, that's, I want to make sure that that's where you all are.
Could you say that again?
I, what I would suggest in terms of this amended for the liquor license is that rather than have any new event come up at the drop of a hat and being asked for a special event license, rather we have a particular license that will apply for this year only and for this particular use only, but there would be a corresponding schedule, so it won't be the series of ad hoc requests, you know?
So it will be event oriented, not day by day?
It would be, well, it could be. I guess that's going to be what they are going to need to clarify. But I think that what, at least if I've been hearing the concerns over, you know, this, this past few years about it, is that too often it's coming up as a surprise. And I think that that's been troublesome, or at least it's created comments among you all from time to time. So I think that trying to have a more, and I know that they've been trying to develop that schedule as, I understand from the conversations that we've had at a staff level. So while they will be event oriented, as you've suggested, they won't be a series of one-offs. It's going to be a license for a year with a prescribed schedule based on these different events.
Can they do it on Tuesday?
I guess that's one of the questions that, I'm looking for you all to say.
Can they use their license on Tuesday?
What does that mean?
I, no, I understand exactly what you're saying. I guess that's, that's one of the questions that goes with their proposed schedule, which I haven't seen it, you know, I've seen a number of items identified, but I don't know with that schedule.
Did you say something in here about the schedule?
Yeah, so for this season and Brothers Field in general, it's only Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
That's what I thought.
Same as we've been. So we originally had, or I should say, this board had instructed a P license back before COVID for the dance studio, which was just a Friday, Saturday, Sunday license as well. We're not looking to add to that outdoor. The 1855 indoor, that would be a seven-day-a-week, it can have its own little area.
But they won't leave their friends
What about this year? But even, even going forward, Brothers Field is, you know, it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay, okay. I have, I mean, I think what's occurred so far, I think, is I'm comfortable with it. I think codifying it makes sense. I think there's a, I'm hearing a different, you know, it's time to put the creativity to 1855 and not with the sideways things on Friday and Saturday for at least this year. I think the only thing we've made very consistent comments about is sound.
Okay, so, I guess, so Vic, what would you need? Well, I've heard some people nodding their heads, yes. I don't know, Chris, if I'm not from you, you're good, okay. I know you're not, right, or you are?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. No, so I mean, as far as moving forward with giving Vic permission to start to write something up for a transitional license, liquor license.
I guess, you know, if you all have particular, I'll call them beefs, that's a legal term, that you want to try to avoid, this is a good time to let us know so that we can put it into this transitional license. If it's just a matter of, let's try to, you know, power through what we've been doing for another summer, that too can be done. But I, you know, I think that was the point of this conversation.
The bar is located where it is.
Where the structure is, yeah.
So it can't move further from that, because that's, that's, if I was going to say a beef, it's like there's a lot of, it crowds into the driving area.
You mean the patrons?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're walking all over the place these days.
Yeah.
And you can't do that in Chicago, you know?
Yeah, you can on a park street, now you can.
Uh, not really, you can't
So let me, let me ask a question in terms of that. Would it be helpful? I mean, you know, part of this is also then how we organize the site, and we can do this in the context of the license. Would it be helpful to have some kind of barriers in place to ensure that you're not going to have the spillover into the parking area?
No, because you want to have people see the fun and want to enjoy the fun, just not have the fun in the middle of the pavement.
And I haven't noticed anyone meandering there, although like to and from Chatterbox, people go to Chatterbox, it's an hour wait, they'll come on over by us, have a cocktail or two, head back, and so there's definitely that. And the brewery is really not an issue. We put a path between, behind the dance studio, so we try to direct all the traffic that way, but there's walkways there too.
Yeah, a bit.
It's just from Old McHenry Historical up to where Chatterbox ends, there's only a sidewalk on the Chatterbox side. There's no sidewalk on our side. You know, it is, I haven't noticed anybody meandering there, but there's a lot of foot traffic.
Oh, yeah.
It's something we're kind of proud of, you know?
I wouldn't suggest a barrier that prevents people from seeing that, but if there's anything you could do to kind of like push them 10 feet closer to
Hey, trustee Misha, can we hear from you too?
I'm all for it. I'm fine with the way it is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Trustee Tanucci?
Affirmative.
Okay. Um, you're, I'm
I, I, I think it would be disingenuous to say I don't think that the tiki bar is a good idea and then say, oh yeah, I can have a license. Kind of would rather be consistent.
Uh
I'm outvoted anyway, so it kind of doesn't matter.
Okay, all right.
I agree with you. I, the reason I say I'm okay with that view is a temporary thing. I, I mean, you know, when the Plan Commission comes back, there's like no way I'm going to go for an outdoor venue. I'm just not. And I don't care how pretty it is, I just think it's not a long road that's, so. I view this as just a temporary thing, get them through the summer. Hopefully the plan comes back and we make it indoor. And I don't know if the community insists about the outdoor.
If the community came strongly in favor of it, would that change your view?
It only takes one, it only takes four votes, right?
No, I, no, I meant, you know, the community real large, not just this
Well, I don't know who that, I don't know who that is. I think we've already gotten comments in from the neighbors saying, hey, hours of operation, noise, propagation, um
Noise is fair, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, right, and
But it doesn't change, it's outdoors, there's, there's no enclosure.
There's no, yeah, there's no way to
You just Yeah, but you were, you were, I think I was
Yeah, there was, for 22 at least, I mean, there was a lot of improvement. We did multiple small speakers throughout the indoor side. We've got on hold some more outdoor speakers, the one that you can kind of put them in the ground and wire them. We did find that to make a big difference. It wasn't uncommon last year for complaints to come in on Brothers Field when we weren't even open. So with that being said, there's times where we were blamed for music at 1:00 AM and we weren't even open. So I do feel that there is a difference. As I said, there is not open and loud or closed and quiet. We can be open and nobody knows we're there outside of the concert days or where the rent was there or something, though that certainly would hurt open. But our standard open operation, I make walks frequently down to the bridge when we're open to just kind of make sure the sound is not exasperating anybody. And you don't hear it, once we get to Buffalo Creek, I can only hear Buffalo Creek speakers. So we're not, our normal operation is not a noise concern, although some of the other activities certainly, not all in the air, it's not a daily operation.
I hear the festivals myself. You know where I live?
I know.
Arlington, Nice Road. So when they turn the festivals away from the church and make them go east, I hear that. I don't
Kind of behind the sunset foods.
I never hear you.
Well, just, just to put it in relationship to what I live with, I think it was, was it last night, last night or the night before, they were moving trains and they were boom, boom, boom. Went on and on and on.
That's awful.
So, so, and, and it's not uncommon to have that going on at, at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. But I'm technology challenged, so I'll answer your question that if you can do, over the summer, is there a way that you can measure the volume from various points consistently in the village? Get half a dozen of them at different events so that we have the numbers of, of what you're actually putting out? That'd be great.
So you had to answer your question. I moved here because it's dark, I moved here because it's quiet, it's residential. I moved away from the city, I moved away from the noise, I moved away from the crowds for a specific reason. And that's why I live here. I, if I want noise, if I want big city, there's a million places to be. And if we don't protect that, we're not even, that, that's part of my, my conception.
And I completely respect that.
You know, I mean, if you like noise, that's great.
I don't.
Jennifer likes the music, that's great, but that next landowner may not. And that's who we're also
Yeah, I, I do think people move here for additional reasons.
True, very true.
Okay, so we have, Vic, do you have, Greg, Taylor, enough direction?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll have something for you for the next meeting and you all can react to it and changes under you, we'll make the changes.
We good to stop here?
Just to, we do some more mastication.
I don't like that word.
You like my new word?
I think we're not going to. Um, I, I think we're good, so thank you. Thanks for being here today. Thanks, Jesse. Okay, so we don't have to talk about the village hall again. So we're up to the village president and trustee reports. I'm going to do a quick thing on my, under my report. You're still up.
We're done, it's 9:00 o'clock, we're going home.
You're going to masticate, is that the word?
I don't even know what that means.
It means it's a chewing, it means it's chewing.
Okay, so, okay, let me just get control really quick. I have, my brief report is, on February 3rd, met with Representative Nabilis Said. Greg and I, she wanted to introduce herself to us, new representative, freshman representative that handles a portion of our village. On February 4th, Rita, Greg and I went to the Lake County Municipal League Eggs and Issues Event. Couple of conversations came up, which is actually good being there. And then on February 8th, I did do the presentation at the Barrington Chamber Economics Summit. So that's, that's my update. Uh, trustee Broowski?
Nothing.
Uh, trustee Kritzmeyer?
Nope.
Trustee Misha?
No report.
Trustee O'Connor? Trustee O'Reilly?
No.
Trustee Tanucci?
Yes, I have something to talk about. I'd like to talk about the grant program. I would like some direction from the board as to whether we would
as to whether we would like a grant program that fully spells out what is allowed and disallowed, and then we live within those limitations. Or would we prefer a policy that lays out the basic guidelines, think of them as broad guardrails, and then gives ourselves considerable leeway within those guardrails? So as requests come in, we evaluate them. As long as they meet these basic guidelines, we can evaluate them and decide whether we want to proceed with the grant. So do we want something fully spelled out and then live within it? Or something that's loosely defined and give ourselves leeway on each individual grant request? Feedback now.
I, I, I commend you for grabbing hold of this. Um, and, and I think the guardrails are the way to go. Um, you get too specific, it's like father. Um, and, and, and so I, I like the idea of a, going back to where we were, admitting the mistakes we made this past year, um, and not doing that again.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, we tried broad and it didn't work, so I would be for something that is more specific, more specific, but not necessarily narrow.
I respectfully, I'm not sure what that means.
We tried broad.
I disagree with it.
And we ended up, we ended up saying we made mistakes. So, you know, judgment errors, whatever it is or was. And I don't think people, I, I don't think it gives, the people who, who are asking for help, I, I don't think it gives them much to hang their hats on. And it ends up, my fear is that it has ended up seeming arbitrary. And I, I don't like that. I don't like walking around here and feeling like, you know, that was really an arbitrary decision we made because we don't have guidelines. And if we do, we frequently don't follow them.
That's the problem.
I'm, I'm starting to have a legal problem with that as time goes on.
Yes, I, I, I'm a little more with Bobby on the broader guidelines and guardrails. I think what we should do is articulate a vision of what we want it to be used for. Because we've thrown in people, we've thrown in the, um, our clip and things like that, sort of.
That's under Route 53.
I know, but it's, it, it, our conversations have muddled it in as, as different kinds of grants.
And, and that certainly isn't.
I, I know that, but our conversations have not been clear on that. I know how our budget looks, but I think of, of vision, I, maybe this is my weird thing. I mean, I think about like, a vision for the Boy Scouts is, you know, all, that we help empower good leaders and good citizens. Okay? It's a very broad bit, but it's, what's a vision for this? I think our vision originally was, um, things we can't think about that bring our community together, that encourage grassroots kinds of stuff. That's not the answer, but that's kind of the thing, like, our vision for this is it, this, and then we create some guardrails around it. Does that communicate well or not?
I, I, it, to me, it's, it's still a square circle. What are, what are the guidelines? You know, vision is one thing, and that's what we had. We, we said community oriented, we said grassroots, and, and, and frankly, the weekly concerts that we had here were attended by a lot of people, be they residents or be they non-residents, and it was very nice. We haven't heard from them in how many years? You know, and yet, and yet, we approved $10,000 for one concert for a private business owner who benefited. That's not what the vision was.
How much more should we beat ourselves for having made that mistake?
That's not the point I'm trying to make. I'm not trying to beat anything. I'm trying to say we, we had a vision and it worked for a while until we violated what we said. We're not, I don't think we're good at that. So I, I would like not strict guidelines. You know, the Constitution is malleable, the Ten Commandments, some say they're super malleable, some say they're not. The point is, the point is, it didn't work in the past and we put a moratorium on it so we could help hopefully develop something better. And, and to say.
And we didn't.
And we still haven't.
Didn't develop anything better.
We still haven't.
So we need to go back to where we were.
I don't think.
And, 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 and perhaps tweak it a little, but, but all in all, it was a good thing. I would love to see another group, even though I didn't approve of them at the time, of, of the music people. Um, I'd love to see them come back in some form and, and, and help them to, um, serve our community, which, which is what we really want to do. We want people to enjoy coming to somewhere, doesn't have to be here, could be Lemon Fields. I don't know what they do there, but they could go there. And, 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 and I don't, I don't think anybody can predict what two months from now some group won't come up with. And I think we ought to be able to react. We're not stupid.
I'm not saying we can't respond. I'm not, I'm not saying that people can't come to us. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have these kinds of events. I'm saying we should have guidelines.
So let me ask you this, do you think of Kent Tanucci's, trustee Tanucci's, uh, guidelines?
And I, I apologize, I have not read them.
Okay, because that's what I've been trying to figure out, is how does this plug in with.
I don't, I haven't read it.
So I sent that out on the 4th of February. It's also under trustee reports in the board packet.
And I apologize. I.
That's okay.
I have that then too.
So, and then the cover letter that I sent out along with this says where it came from, that I used the 2013 policy as a baseline, added some are all restrictions from 2018, and added the reimbursement clause from the one we talked about last time, as well as grant guidelines one, two, from what we talked about last time. And I felt this was a good place to start a discussion of if we're saying we want it to be broad and then give ourselves freedom within those broad guidelines.
Mm-hmm, or no, right.
This was a good place to start. So I would encourage anybody who didn't read it to please do so.
I apologize.
And then we can go from there.
Well, I think one of the interesting things about almost every board is that the big decisions fly right through. We just did a million. Did anybody else have any concern over the 100 and X number of dollars? No. But $10,000, boy, oh, boy, we can get our teeth on that one. And, and, and that's so common in, in what we do.
You're right. You know, there's $10,000 here, there's $15,000 there, $5,000 here. You're right, you know, and.
No, the big ones, the big ones are easier because you don't have to think about them. But somebody else tells you to do it.
So, so how about this? Um, it's Valentine's Day, 5 to 9. Um, Kent put out, did some nice work. Um, let's everyone take a look at it and provide feedback, please.
Kent, I read it. I liked it.
Thank you.
I'm reading it. It's good. I think. I'll give you, I'll, I'll send an email back rather than belabor our discussion.
Then we'll stop it here if everyone's okay? You good? All right, I think. Okay, so then, any report from the village manager?
Just quickly, the Water RFP proposal, uh, conference is tomorrow. RFP responses pack on, in 10 days.
How many people coming?
Uh, we had two vendors request the RFP package. One vendor bowed out today. The, uh, business wasn't big.
So we'll have one response at most?
Right now. They stay, they have until the 24th to respond. We put it into the paper. We put it on the website.
All right, so how about a motion to adjourn? Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer.
That would be.
Who did? Oh, trustee O'Reilly? Who did it? Trustee O'Reilly did? Trustee, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. So, all right, trustee O'Reilly and seconded by trustee Broowski, okay.
Say aye. Bobby, Bobby, say aye. Bobby, aye, aye.
She said aye. You want to adjourn?
Are we doing a roll call?
Yes, we are. Are you, adjourned?
I can't hear through.
Adjourn.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. I lost total control. Thank you, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day!